Okay, this November 15th, 2017, meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School District will come to order. Before we move to the agenda, I would like just to read a short statement about conduct in meetings. After the last meeting, I decided to review the board policy about the conduct of meetings, since a major job of the chair is to run the meeting. The word that stands out in the policy is the word "civil." It is a test of any community to discuss highly contested issues in a civil way. I don't want to revisit that meeting or cast any blame. I see no point in that. But I want to say that the word "civil" means -- but I want to say what the word "civil" means to me. It means respecting those who disagree with you. It means arguing policies, or ideas, or positions, or evidence, and not persons. It means affirmatively advocating for the changes you seek. And finally, it applies to all of us: board, administrators, those who speak in public comment. Going forward, I hope we can all pledge to be civil, to take the high road, and be models for our children, students, and community. Okay. So we need to move to the approval of the agenda. I would like to propose that there will be a motion on cooperative football. We move that ahead of the discussion on the Siemens lease, since there's so many people here, I think, for that issue. Is that agreeable to people?
Yeah.
And Kenny, you have a...
I'd like to make a special announcement, so I'd like a board approval to do that. I'd like to do that after we're done approving the agenda before public comments.
Okay. So Kenny's requested that. Are people agreeable to his making? You okay with that? Okay. So that'll come right after the approval of the agenda. And there will be a -- there'll be a motion with your business administrator to approve the tuition rates, right? You'll explain that when you come before us. Okay. So do we approve the agenda with those changes? All of us in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. So Kenny, you have a chance to make your comment.
Was there a motion for that?
What? I'm sorry.
We didn't have a motion. Who made the motion for the...
I'm sorry.
Retractively, I make a motion.
I'll second the retroactive motion.
Okay, retroactive. We seconded it. Oh, was it -- we voted on it? Seven in favor. I apologize for that.
Thank you.
So the agenda's approved with those changes. Kenny?
I'm a physician. I've been a physician in the Seacoast since 1986. I learn day by day, more and more, that the decisions I make in the office when I practice medicine include evaluating risk and benefit. Nothing comes as a free ride. Any medication I prescribe, any test I order, any kind of screening that I do, there's a risk and a benefit. It's a conversation that I have with every patient. Maybe many of you know about informed consent, and maybe before you had a surgery, you had an informed consent. But really, every single little thing you do, you deserve informed consent. That's what the practice of medicine is about. I've spoken at this board table many times about football. I believe my first meeting on the board in March of 2013, we dealt with football. I have acknowledged repeatedly the value of the sport for the participants, for the team camaraderie, for the lessons about physical conditioning, to learn to operate as a unit, to go beyond sometimes some pain, to work for a common good. At our last board meeting, I expressed that same sentiment. I spoke about not wanting to support football because of my worry about CTE, about brain damage. The data has been increasing throughout the years. The science of the studies is increasing throughout the years. In all the discussions I've had about football, I would have loved to have seen a discussion about risk and benefit. I was very opposed to vote in support of a cooperative when it came to our attention, I believe it was a year and three-quarters ago, when I got a sense from the parents involved that they were not addressing the issue of CTE, as we talked about injuries, concussions, and injuries in other sports which happen. But unique to football and boxing is CTE. Our board has not had a discussion about CTE. There have been very few of us on the board who have raised that issue. Since our last meeting, we've received numerous letters to the school board calling me on my comments, asking me to resign, and I don't do social media, but people have come up to myself and my wife and asked, "Well, what do you think about what's going on in social media?", including the derogatory things said about me, and actually even physical threats. I challenge all of you to go back to that last meeting and see what I said that in any way was destructive as far as the sport of football except for CTE. And I go by science. When we had a discussion about start time, we talked about science, and we talked about the risk and benefit. We talked about the science proving start time late sleep was good for kids, and we talked about how that could affect our community, our parents, our students, by having late start time. I would encourage this community to have a true discussion about the risks and benefits of football. I feel that I've been very wrongly quoted as saying things which I did not say, and there's a line in a song I love, that people aren't going to learn what they don't want to know. And that's very true, and I find that through all aspects of life. And I'm not going to be a participant in any football discussions. I'm recusing myself from any football discussions because I don't feel we're having the discussion about what is appropriate. And a motion is here. I think we need science and a motion, and without a full discussion, I can't participate. So I am recusing myself. You will not hear from me again about football.
Okay. We have public comment now. So I need a show of hands of how many people... Keep them up. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen... We counted about 13 hands, which we're going to have 30 minutes. So everybody has two minutes.
Oh, come on.
That's... We've always counted, so we're going to have...
Could you ask if everyone is to speak about football? Because everyone here is... Maybe they're people...
I think we have less -- fewer than 15 people raised their hand. Two minutes would fill the 30 minutes that we normally have. So that's... The board can overrule that if you think that we should be more generous, but it's... Okay?
I would... I'm asking, could I ask if everyone is... Is there anyone here not to speak about football?
Oh, no.
Not to speak about football?
Sure.
Okay. Could we have Dean, and then I could leave? I would appreciate that.
Oh, with the comments, oh.
Oh, it's okay with me. Dean?
But it's still two minutes, correct?
Still two minutes left.
Okay, got it. Okay. And I'm just going to hold...
We gotta have a new system now, okay? So I don't have to interrupt you. We're going to hold up.
Hold up the red card when two minutes is up, so you know.
Okay.
I know what to ignore. All right, thanks. I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. I'm not here to talk about football, I guess, which is why I'm here. I'm here to gripe about the lease purchase agreement with Siemens. I don't like it. I don't think any voter should like it. I'm not commenting on the individual projects. It's the financing I don't like. It took us 20 years and five election days to get 60 percent to build... to bond $2 million to build our track and field. It was hard work. It was a lot of elections, but those were the rules, and we followed them. Here, we're encumbering the district for perhaps $5 million that will be paid off over 10 years, but it's not going to be the voters that decide. It's going to be a majority of the board. The state of New Hampshire has set up the rules so that bonds, because they encumber the district for so long, are approved by the voters at 60 percent. Since this is essentially a bond and everything but name, I think this should go to the voters as well. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Okay? Next speaker?
Did you want to sign?
Oh, is there a place to sign in after they speak, so we...
Oh, I'm sorry. My hearing is abysmal. I had a three-minute statement. I'm asking for it to be put in the record, but I won't be able to finish it, obviously. Bob Barth, Lee. I want to apologize to any who took offense at my statement before the board prior. That said, let me try to clarify where I wish to be coming from. One, along with proponents of football, I wish the science would prove football to be reasonably safe, but it doesn't. Increasingly, science, not my opinion nor yours, is proving that any child playing youth and high school contact football is at high risk, perhaps 100 percent, from some level of brain injury. Having some knowledge of the science, in good conscience, I admit to being morally compelled to at least try to help informed deciders what they are dealing with. Again, not my opinion, but the science, the facts. Most parents and some on this board are not fully informed of the science and still have no clue that concussion has almost no bearing on the problem. Many don't wish to know the science, and many will remain in denial, whatever the evidence. How many have ever heard of tau proteins, and perhaps discussed with their kids, the pros and cons of these abnormal proteins, the precursors for CTE accumulating in their brains? Who would want to know? I don't envy parents their choices, damned if they do and damned if they don't. Place their kids at high risk of brain damage if they do, or face possible resentment from them if they don't. Two, I object to my tax dollars supporting an activity with this level of risk, but they do by supporting the ORYA program wherein science tells us the worst damage is sustained. I have every reason and right to shout my objections from the rooftops. Any high school program, football program, will...
Okay.
Just five seconds. Obviously, increase ORYA participation and add overwhelming pressure in the future for a dedicated ORHS tax-supported team. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Michelle Nathan from Lee. I'm a practicing emergency physician, and I'm a physician parent who has a son who's a football player. I became well-versed in the medical literature surrounding repetitive head injuries and traumatic brain injuries before I allowed my son to play, and there is certainly a connection between repetitive head injuries, concussions, and the development of CTE. Headlines would let you believe that professional football players will all develop CTE, but the studies are actually fundamentally scientifically flawed. Primarily, there is no control group for comparison. All sports have some degree of repetitive head injuries. Dr. Bennett Omalu, who Dr. Barth has quoted in the past, noted that before a child suffers a concussion, there must have been hundreds, if not thousands, of sub-concussions. Those are the repetitive head injuries that he's talking about. In gender-matched sports, girls have significantly higher concussion rates than boys, with girl soccer players suffering the most concussions. This suggests that girls are subject to more repetitive head injuries than boys. So now, are we going to stop girls from playing sports, and particularly soccer? Or are we really just going to focus on football and no other sport in the district? We have the opportunity to build this program from the ground up with safety features in place that have not been there for the other sports programs that have known repetitive head injuries. Why don't we take that opportunity and give our boys, some of whom have no other sports that they've been captivated by, the chance to participate in sports and be part of the Oyster River community? Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is from a journal of scientific study. It is from the American Academy of Orthopedic Surgeons. It was a paper presented...
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Kelly Doherty. I have a son that plays football, has since second grade. March 15th, 2007, female players of soccer, which this school offers, suffer the highest rate of concussions among all high school athletes in the United States. Well, football has both scientifically and colloquially... Okay, I'm nervous. Coic... You know what I'm trying to say.
Yeah.
Associated with the highest concussion rates. The study found that girls, especially those who play soccer, face a much higher risk. This is from Dr. Wellington Hugh, who is a professor of orthopedics at Northwestern University in Chicago. This study went over the course of five years. There were 41,000 high school athletes involved in this study. Girls were at a greater risk because they had the ball, there's lack of protective gear, and then on the emphasis of contact during the game. Our boys have full padding, full gear, full head protection. I also wrote a letter. Please accept this letter as a statement of my overwhelming support for Oyster River High School adopting the cooperative agreement for football. My son has been playing tackle football since he was in the second grade. His love of this game, development of skills, and self-confidence have grown over these past six years. I am not a child abuser. Oyster River offers other school sports that are dangerous, as I just scientifically stated. This past season of Oyster River Rec Football had eight players from Barrington. As you know, Barrington is a school that has the opportunity to come here. We pay approximately $50,000. Think of that loss over eight children. Thank you.
Krista Butts. I still live in Lee. And I don't want to talk about head injuries because I've talked about them already, and I am an informed parent. I think all of these parents are informed parents. None of these parents are stupid. None of these parents make decisions for their children that they don't learn something about. It's like we do for everything, but we also, you know, weigh our decisions when we hand our keys to our kids to learn how to drive for the first time, and they go through what they need to go through in order to prepare themselves for that. They do the same thing to play this sport. They do that for every sport. But today, I wanted to actually talk about the Warren article from last year. The Warren article from last year, as you all know, was amended at the deliberative session to be not well-written, we'll just say that. And your attorney on the day of the deliberative session actually advised the board that a yes or no vote on this article would have absolutely no bearing on anything. The article was poorly written in that you either, one, voted for football and against all other sports, or, two, voted for all other sports and not for football. So depending on what your child likes to do, you know, it's an impossible decision for you. The article didn't mention anything about allowing kids to play for another district. If the majority of residents and if the majority of residents are against having a sport, having this sport at ORHS, a cooperative agreement would then be the best possible solution. It gives kids who want to play the avenue to do so outside of the district, and you don't have to have the program here at Oyster River High School at all. The school board and district has already approved a girls' cooperative hockey agreement with Portsmouth, a girls' cooperative wrestling relationship with Exeter. Could not considering or approving the cooperative relationship for boys with Portsmouth or Dover also in fact be considered a violation of Title IX? Or, worse, discrimination? If you were to put any other extracurricular activity or sport on the ballot in an article written this way, it is likely to fail my majority vote. People just don't have the amount of children in those particular activities.
Good evening, Board. My name is John Jones. I'm a resident of Durham, and I'm here to speak in favor of the board approving a motion that allows the athletic director, the school principal, and the superintendent the opportunity to explore a cooperative agreement with Portsmouth High School for a shared football program. You're not voting to let kids play football out here on your field. You're voting to let the athletic director move forward with an investigative study. The school board has a duty to allow this investigation to proceed. You have a process that allows this investigation. It's policy JJJD. It's the athletic policy sanctioning of sports. You should all be familiar with it. It's one of your policies. Boards should not and cannot be held hostage by a handful of residents and a board member who oppose the game of football. The board should not and cannot be coerced into a decision-making process. Our president is of a small minority of the board and one member of the community who showed up to speak against football, neither of whom have children in the school system. It's apparent from this year's previous board meetings, the minutes, that these same two individuals have led the board's opposition to a football program. I'm not an uninformed parent. I present the statement that I'm letting my child play a sport without being informed of the risks. My job involves risk. I work at a nuclear power plant. We send men into the nuclear reactor many, many times. I know the risk. I know about risk mitigation. I understand the risk associated with football. I've read the Pop Warner lawsuit articles, other medical articles, and they do discuss risk, but many of these are written by journalists who have an agenda. The conclusion in many of the reports I looked at state that there is no definitive answer to whether or not CTE is caused by football. So in summary, I just want to say that the district and the board cannot be held liable, and you have limits on those liabilities, and I do support the position of the board allowing the athletic director the opportunity to explore the option of a cooperative agreement with Portsmouth. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Logan Flynn, and I'm a sophomore at Oyster River High School. I'm here tonight to support the football co-op between our school and Portsmouth High School or Dover High School. I believe wholeheartedly that our school should have a football team, but since those dreams have been put out, I believe that the co-op is the next best thing. I understand that this football co-op will never directly help me play football again, but I am here tonight to speak on behalf of my brother, who would someday love to be allowed to play high school football with his Oyster River teammates. I am also here on behalf of the members of my team that will never be able to play football competitively again, at least at the high school level. I learned many life lessons while playing football, like sportsmanship, strong work ethic, and teamwork while practicing and playing games. People always say that all sports teams teach teamwork, but I found that football is the most team-oriented sport that I've ever played, and I've played five sports competitively. Without 11 strong, able, and willing individuals on the field, no team can win. In most sports, even team sports, it's fairly easy for a small group of people to take over and win games. For two years, my team, the ORYA team, went undefeated, one year allowing zero points to opposing teams. This was because we had 28 kids, the size of our entire team, who were willing and able to play and wanted to win as badly as any other team to play the sport. I'm not afraid of my brother getting hurt. I know that we have excellent people in this community that will know exactly what to do if he or anyone is ever injured, and the people in Portsmouth and Dover are just as qualified. Football has been described as a brutal and violent sport, with the only guarantee coming from it that players will become violent and brain damaged. I see this logic as being filled with stigmas and biases. As a student at Oyster River, I pride myself on being unbiased and to resist stigmas when they are presented to me. There seems to be a stigma going around very small parts of Oyster River that football would make people like Aaron Hernandez. I've heard parents and even some community members say things like this, but the thing that may surprise you most is that I've never once heard a student at any grade level say anything like that. Every student that I've talked with, football, soccer, lacrosse, volleyball, or basketball players alike, all thought that we should be able to play football, even if it is with Portsmouth or Dover now. This isn't because they haven't heard of the negative things associated with football. They've all heard about CTE, and Aaron Hernandez, and OJ Simpson. Their reasoning is the same as mine, though. If enough people want to play a sport, then they should be able to. That should be the only reasoning here. If parents don't want their kids playing football, then they have the right to prevent them from doing so. Parents should be the ones...
Sorry. Finish your sentence, okay, then?
Parents should be the ones to say no to their kids and not the school board.
Thank you very much.
I'm Logan's mom. My name's Hope Flynn. We live in Madberry, so I'm just going to finish some of his comments, because he worked really hard on this last night. So one of the things that Logan wanted to point out to you guys was that Logan actually had a concussion when he was in eighth grade, and in contacting his teachers and talking with people about what had happened, we learned that seven other students were under treatment for concussions at the school at the same time. And it may surprise you that only one of them, I'm sorry, only two of them were from the same sport. Two of them were for soccer. The other five were for biking, basketball, swimming, horse riding, and hockey. One of the other things that Logan wanted to share with you guys was that a number of his friends who lived in the community, I believe it was seven total in six families, actually moved and moved to schools where they could actually play football. They were people who were involved in the community, because if you think that football is not a part of this community, you are wrong. There are 11, I'm sorry, 111 kids from grades third through eighth grade who played football with ORYA just this year. If you want to see that there is a community, come to our banquet that's on December 1st here at the high school at 7 o'clock. I can tell you that there are so many people who want to be involved in this. You guys gave five students from Portsmouth the chance to play ice hockey, doing the cooperative agreement that you did a year and a half ago. We're just asking for the same thing. Let our kids play football if they want to play football. We understand it's not going to be here at Oyster River, and we know that other schools... I personally spoke with a school board member from Dover tonight, when I was in a meeting before this, who told me they are very excited to talk with our board about this. They would love to be involved in a cooperative agreement, and I know Portsmouth feels the same. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Robin Kewen, Madberry. I'm here representing my son, James, who started playing football for ORYA this last, the beginning of the summer. James hasn't taken to many sports, but I think the difference that football is, the training program, the team focus, has made a huge difference for him. All I have to do is talk to him about, you know, if you want to play football, you've got to be athletic. You've got to show that athleticism, and it perks him right up, right? You know, he comes up the side of the mountain much faster with me because he knows that that's all part of being part of his team and doing better for his team. He's really enjoyed it. He gets maybe 10 plays a game, you know, or maybe one of those involves a tackle. The benefit he is getting is far more than that field time, that play time, and I can't express how much he's enjoying that, and how much I'd like him to continue doing that for as long as he wants to, because it is his choice. It's not my choice. It's his choice. And if he wants to make that choice, I'd like to have the choice to give it to him. I want you to imagine that there are 111 kids involved in ORYA football this year, and next year they'll add another 20, and next year they'll add another 20. And yes, some kids will go away, they'll leave the district, they won't be able to play football anymore, but they will keep on... New kids will be coming into that football program every year. Add that up, that's hundreds of people. When we look at the other side who's arguing against and not wanting those people to have those opportunities, it's the same two or three voices, okay? So I want you to, you know, balance that out, okay? If this was a climate change argument, we wouldn't put one person in the room versus one pro-scientist and say, "That's a fair conversation here. We've got a lot more people who would like that opportunity." And yes, they do weigh those risks. We, you know, we all are parents. We weigh those risks every day. My son skis. He plays, you know, he sleds, he climbs trees, he rides bikes. He has full-contact pajama putting on every night, apparently, noise. You know, I'd like him to play football. It's my choice to let him make his choice.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Jones. I'm here to ask you, the board, to approve a discussion between Oyster River and Portsmouth for a cooperative football agreement. Although I support every child in Oyster River who wishes to play the sport of football, I would like to tell you about my son. Evan Jones is an eighth grader. After spending his first 13 years of life in South Florida, last December, his father and I moved him to New Hampshire and entered him into Oyster River Middle School mid-year. He has had a terrible time adjusting to the move and still insists that he's moving back to Florida. Other than going to school and playing on the middle school and recreational basketball teams, he basically did not come out of his bedroom from December until football season this fall. Evan is an exceptionally intelligent student. He was placed in a... He was twice a school science fair winner in Florida, invited to compete in Palm Beach County School District Science Fair. He was invited to join the Duke TIP program and took the SAT exam as a seventh grader last fall before we moved. He is a natural, talented musician, plays violin and guitar. He was consecutively one of his school's top chess players. He has always taken pride in his academics, but now since we've moved, I see him start to not care so much. He is an amazing athlete, playing some sport, some sport every month of the year, baseball, basketball, and his very favorite, and the sport that he far excels in, football. Football is Evan's passion, his heart, and his hopes and his dreams. He is really, really an outstanding football player. He's better at football than most anything.
Jennifer, just could you finish the last sentence, okay?
Unfortunately, I've learned that people here want to take that opportunity away from him, and it should be a parent's choice.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen McHaleb from Barrington, New Hampshire, mom of a Oyster River sophomore girl and a ORYA football-playing boy. I'd like to talk a little bit about the coaching, and I'll begin by asking you to think back to your adolescence. As you look back, do you see an adult, a teacher or two, or perhaps a coach that stands out as your memory as being important to you? If we are lucky, we've had one or two mentors, be they teachers or coaches, that have willingly steered our journey in a positive direction. And if you know anything about teaching or coaching, you also know that the ability to teach, to mentor, to inspire, to guide a young person is a gift. This bears repeating, good teaching, good coaching is a gift. I'm writing to you to suggest that you could ask a much more important question regarding the football cooperative with Portsmouth, and that is, can we place a value on the coaching, the contribution the coaches presently at the ORYA football program? Truly, we have a huge opportunity in front of us, and I'm wondering if we are evaluating it properly. Before you are nearly 10 experienced coaches with an awesome program, and they are saying, "I want to give to your community. I want to give to this community." If you are like me, you've taken time to watch Brendan Thomas, Richard Smith, and John Luesinger work with the youngsters on the third and fourth grade teams. Do you know how hard it is to explain and guide and hold a space for excellence and performance for the young bodies on this team? And then there's Coach Butts and Brad Barubi, who worked with John Luesinger to take our seventh and eighth grade team to the playoffs. Have you ever watched them practice? If you have, then you surely know how far each of these players has come and as an individual, and how hard the coaches had to work to foster the necessary spirit and cooperation to achieve what they achieved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm David Taylor from Durham. I've sat in your seat before. I know this is a very hard decision. I know it's very hard to make controversial decisions. You're dealing with a lot of anecdotal evidence, a lot of discussion, a lot of input from the public. Most of the time when you make those kinds of decisions, that's the kind of evidence, the kind of things you have to weigh in making that. This is not that case. For football, the community has spoken. In spite of some doubts that people cast, everyone who voted last year knew what they were voting. If they supported football, they knew how to vote. If they didn't want football, they knew how to vote. And the community as a whole said, "No, we don't want football. We haven't had football for 60 years. We don't want to add it now. The risks are too high." Your job is to do what the community wants you to do, to do what's best for the community. And the community has given you a very clear voice on what your actions should be. Thank you.
My name is Tanya Carlton, and I am a parent to two boys. I have a fifth grader and I have a seventh grader. And up to this year, or up to last year, I had two soccer players. Anybody who knows my husband knows that soccer is his life, and as such, wanted it to be the boys' life. Unfortunately, we have, not unfortunately, for my husband, we have a fifth grader who loves football and has played both football and soccer this fall, and what he has, he has come to love the sport of football. And as a pharmacist, every single day, I review scientific evidence, and I look to the risks and the benefits of medications for my patients. And before my son played football, I also looked to the risks and to the benefits for him as well. I guess for me, I support the board investigating a cooperative agreement with either Portsmouth or Dover. I really feel for the families who these players cannot continue into high school because they may not have the funds to be able to look to other schools. And we're not asking for the community to be funding a football program. We're looking just to have the ability for our kids to be able to play a sport that they love. So please, consider investigating a cooperative agreement with another town. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're at 30 minutes, maybe one more? Okay?
Hi, my name is Kathy Fagan. I'm a resident of Lee. I'm an Oyster River parent of a fifth grade boy. I'm a daughter of a retired NFL player, and I'm a speech-language pathologist who has 20 years' experience providing neurocognitive rehabilitation from adolescents to adults and elderly. I consistently treat patients who are post-concussive of all ages, of all causes. I can tell you with complete honesty, I have not treated a football player. Doesn't mean they don't exist. Of course, they do. But we see, again, just to reiterate, all sports. I submitted a letter to the board. I've attached a lot of great references. Statistics for all sports are high. The rate of injury for a football player is 6.4. The rate for a hockey player is 5.4. I mean, the numbers don't lie, they're close together. So there's multiple sports we need to think about. I think the topic of this concussion risk and CTE is really connected to the majority of sports. I think they just haven't all been studied like football has. I agree. I've also found girls' sports higher risk than boys. I'm looking into the evidence. Being in the rehabilitation field, we have to treat our patients with what works. So I think it's important to realize that there's different types of hits on the head, there's different types of injuries, there's head-to-head, there's head-to-surface. Heading a ball can be different than hitting another player. So there's lots of different types of impact. It all makes a difference. I think if we continue to exclude football from our school district due to those safety risks, then we need to look at mandating changes across all sports. And I'm not looking to do that. That's not my goal in this. I just think that with the media and the research and the attention that's gone onto football, I think that it's put a lot of fear, a lot of anxiety into a lot of people. And as a parent, I would be fully supportive of my son to play football. I think that there's been state laws put into place over the last 10 years, including New Hampshire, that require more medical intervention, symptom management, and closer, more in-depth training, so that all professionals that work with the program know what to look for, how long to keep them out of play, and to limit playing time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to conclude the public comment, and appreciate the comments of everybody. It was a very civil and stimulating discussion. We move to the approval of the minutes. Could I have a motion to approve the November 1st, 2017 minutes? Denise?
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes for November 1st.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Dan. Are there corrections?
I just...
Denise?
I have something very, very minor on page eight, halfway down the page. When the talk, it's actually referring to Kenny. Kenny's talking about football, and there's sort of two different paragraphs. There was like a gap. Kenny noted that there were two groups of parents here this evening, and then it goes on one group advocating, that should be all part of the same. It looks like it's two separate discussions, but it's actually all part of what he was talking about, so just make them one paragraph.
So did you have that? Okay, are there other corrections? So I'm sorry, did we have a motion? We did, right? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes with those corrections, please raise your hands. Six in favor, you weren't here.
I abstained.
Abstained. Six in favor, the student rep is in favor, and one abstention. So we move to announcements, commendations, and comments from the district. Are there any? No? From the board? Denise?
I'd like to commend the Mouth of the River staff for a wonderful issue as always, and also to let the community know that you can subscribe and have it delivered to your home. So if you want to know what's going on in the high school, it's a great way to see the student perspective, and I think it's $25 for the year or something like that, so well worth it.
Michael?
I've got a couple of things I wanted to comment on. First of all, when I first joined the board, I tried to respond directly to all of the emails that I received, and for a while it was not very many. I have not been able to do that for the last, at least, six weeks or so, but I do appreciate all of the input from the community and the engagement that we've had recently. We talked some last time when I wasn't here about the diversity forum in the cafeteria here. I found that to be a very challenging, personally challenging and stimulating event, and I really appreciate all of the work, especially from the panel that went into putting that together. I also took Friday morning to participate in the diversity training that Andrew Smith is coordinating for the staff of the district, and I don't know if any of the other board members have taken the opportunity to do that, but I would strongly encourage you to do so. It's not, it's definitely not the end of the road, but it is a fantastic first step, and I appreciate very much Mr. Allen and Dr. Morse, the invitation to participate in that. Denise beat me to the punch. In addition to Mouth of the River, I also wanted to tout the production values and quality of the Voice of the River podcast, which I discovered recently. So I think that's pretty cool production from the high school here as well.
Are there board comments?
Just wanted to thank Hannah Jane for inviting us to the Senate meeting the other day. I know four of us were there, and it was, I don't know what you guys thought, but I thought it was a pretty good conversation. It was great to do that. I'd like to do it more often if we could. I think there's a lot more topics that we can discuss, because your time is limited and our time is limited. So for those of you that missed it, I think it was a good opportunity, and if you have a chance in the future to make one of these Senate meetings, it's actually, it's pretty good. It's good and interactive, which is nice. It's kids that really presented themselves well, and it was great to hear what they had to say. So thank you.
Nothing particular, as you're moving to this complex, different, new schedule and how that's going to play out. I think it's kind of an interesting time.
Yeah. Have you been able to see the schedule yet, the ones that are proposed? We haven't seen it yet.
Are there board comments?
Hannah, that's coming up on the 20th.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we're not going to have a report on competency, because Jay Richard is with his middle schoolers at Catmire Vista, right?
Exactly.
So, so superintendent's report?
Thank you.
Unless there's something else from Todd. Todd, are you okay? Okay.
So, an informal announcement that we've finally, after four years of trying, have entered into an agreement with the University of New Hampshire with an early college option for our kids. It's being finalized as we speak, and the university's putting together a press release on it, so we'll be the first public high school in the state to have an early college option with the university. What that ultimately means for our parents, since we have so many in the audience, is that you, your child in high school will be able to take a university course, their first university course, for nothing, great price, since the course is cost about $4,000 for undergraduates. And then, as your children proceed through the options of taking more university courses while high school students, the tuition charge would only be $800. So it's an amazing opportunity added to other opportunities we already have for post-secondary options for our kids while still in high school. I also wanted to just fill the board in. Our goal was, or my goal was, and I was very bold about this and thought I could accomplish it and have failed, which is to have our focus groups start in October related to a success or strategic plan. I have talked to Nezdek, who are contracted to do the focus group work, and we'll start in January. And then, in terms of the continuing dialogue on diversity, I provided you a sample of David Goldsmith's newsletter, where he talks about diversity at Mohermit School, and then this week he had conversations around how to address issues of race at the school. That is being paralleled at all four schools. So we've taken it from the district level and starting to have the conversations at the building level. And today I met with community organizers around the book, Waking Up White, which is going to be a three-community dialogue on white privilege that will start in January, culminating with the author being in district on April 16th. So we have a lot of pieces still in the works, and I'm pretty excited about the work we're doing. And I am meeting with a group of parents who are interested in doing a policy addendum to our current policy specifically on race. So that's where we are right now, and I just thought I'd let the board know that.
Questions for Jim? No? Business administrator, and I think we have a motion, an action we need to take, right?
Just handing out the memo that I usually get to you with your agenda, and I apologize I didn't get to you on time, but it's just the setting of the tuition rate, and this is the tuition rate that we would charge to students that opt to come to the school, with permission, of course, from you. And then it's also the rate that Durham charges UNH for students that are in Forest Park. And that rate, those are the separate rates for each middle, high school, and elementary, and they're on the bottom there. And they're calculated, you can see on the back, they're calculated using the current budget and the October 1st ADM. Questions?
There are no questions. Could we have a motion to approve these rates? Denise?
I motion to approve the tuition rates as presented.
Moved by Denise, second by Val. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. Those are approved.
Thank you.
Student Senate report?
All right. So obviously, as we talked about, the student senate did meet with the school board, which I thought was a really productive discussion. Obviously, I wish it could have lasted a little longer, because there is such a short amount of time, but there was an awesome turnout of Senate members, of freshmen all the way through seniors, which I think gave a really good perspective of different grade levels and how things work for different grade levels, that I honestly didn't know how freshmen are dealing with some of the office hours and homework schedules, since it's changed since my freshman year, which I thought was really beneficial to hear about as well. And I thought it was great that the school board, that the four of you guys came and listened to us and asked great questions. And I agree that I think that that should be more often, and I'll try to make that happen. The senate also had, we got a chance to see the two schedules that are being proposed and offer students opinions on the schedule changes. We weren't able to vote on them or really have a long discussion, because again, with the short time that we have for our meetings, but it was really nice to see the schedule and kind of get to talk to the people who designed it, to offer our student opinions and what we think that the schedule should look like and what would be most helpful for us. And then tomorrow is the winter sports presentation at the high school, so if you want to, if students want to participate in a winter sport, you can go meet the coaches, hear about the sports, which is exciting, because the winter sports season is starting.
Wow, so soon.
Yes, thank you.
One thing that we didn't get much chance to, I think it just came up at the end, they're talking about the relationship of the schedule to homework, and that if you're not having every class, every subject, every day, that will... every class, every subject, every day, that will lead to, you know, not having the seven, seven homeworks for the next day. Is that the sense of how, how that, how those two things might be connected?
Yeah, there, there is, there is a big connection between those and the schedule, which I think the, the senate really appreciated because it's tough having five, seven, not five, seven classes of homework every night. So they, they definitely consider that when making the new schedule.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Um, okay, so we move the, uh, motion on cooperative football, and I believe, Dan, you have a motion written, is that right?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so before I make the motion, I just, uh, wanted to preface it with, um, my feeling that, you know, one of the, one of the traits of this board that I think is a strength is, um, its responsiveness to community groups. Um, and so, um, you know, again, to reiterate what I said at the last meeting, we, I really appreciate and find invaluable all of the, um, the, the letters, the emails, um, and the public comment, uh, that people make, especially when students come. Um, so, um, you know, it, it's a, it's a real act of civics when, when students come out and give us their firsthand perspective, and I find that really helpful. So with that said, um, I think the next logical, logical step for the board is to, um, is to, to look further into a, a football cooperative. Um, so I'm going to make a motion. Motion reads as follows. The board instructs the administration to investigate and report back on the following questions related to any potential ORCSD football cooperative. What implied or expressed obligations would this agreement create for future ORCSD boards? Would there be costs to the districts and parents, and what would those be? What impact would the cooperative have on Title IX compliance? What impact would the cooperative have on other ORCSD programs? What issues related to liability would the cooperative create? And besides Portsmouth and Dover, are other districts interested in a cooperative?
Okay, so you're making that motion?
That's the motion.
Is there a second? Seconded by Brian. Discussion?
Sorry, what was the last?
Uh, besides Portsmouth and Dover, are other districts interested in a cooperative?
Denise?
Um, and I, I just want to echo, um, what Dan said in terms of getting the feedback from the community. I definitely very much appreciate everyone coming out, writing the letters, all of that. Very helpful. Um, the only thing that I would like to add to that, um, is I want to know, and well, maybe it's already under the obligations, maybe it falls into that, but I want to know whether, if at some future point, the cooperative is no longer able to continue for whatever reason. I know previously, one of the issues was that it was almost, um, going to be a requirement that, um, Oyster River would have to take over, like the football. My understanding is the rules have changed about that, but I want that spelled out as well. I mean, if we, you know, if, um, um, the, our, you know, athletic director and it would come back, comes back with, you know, this is the proposal, A, B, C, D, whatever, I want to make sure that that's in writing, that, um, that that would not, you know, make it so that we would have, you know, keep us, future board on the hook, um, for a football team. So I, I don't know if we can add that to it, or is that part of the obligation, or is that what it is?
That was, I, I, in writing the first question, I had that in mind.
Okay.
If you feel, if the board feels more comfortable being more explicit, I'd be fine with that, but that is what I had in mind.
Send the minutes so we know. I think your motion covers it, and we have Denise's desire for it to be addressed, so.
Okay.
I mean, those will be the questions I would want to have answered.
Yes.
I think you've done a nice job capturing that. Are there, Al?
So I've actually, I don't, I've lost track of the number of times, actually, that football has come before me. And actually, at this point, the issue actually transcends, transcends football. It's really, when you look at a community, a community's strength is really shown by how it's able to deal with complex problems. And I, and when I talk to students, they ask me, what do I think students at Oyster River should, should learn? What's their most important lesson? And I said, it's problem solving. And so to me, you know, I've heard a lot of letters that are in comments about what the board is supposed to do, but one of the fundamental things that the board does is to impose a fair process that allows all problems, whether it be cell phones, or start time, or foreign language, or expanding music, or football. The problems are, are able to come forward and we as a community can examine them and can make a, an informed decision, a civil informed decision as we, we've come up. So to me, as I have looked at that, every single one of those problems that have come to us, the board isn't thoroughly investigated. And I, and again, if you've seen how we've worked, most people will say we're slow, but we tend to be very, very vigilant about looking at any process because, again, I've heard a lot of things thrown out about the cooperative agreement having no costs and a lot of things, but, but you can't say that until you really have looked at the actual agreement. And I think that is an obligation of, of anything that we look at. That being said, I look forward to how can we make this a fair process for the community? And it, the problem I've seen, this is such an emotional issue, that every time this comes up, it divides our community. And it's, it's people that would work together on the pumpkin stroll or any number of projects, this issue is extraordinarily difficult and divisive. And so I, I've struggled for a month at how is it possible that we can have a fair process where the community can actually decide this fairly, and, which is not easy. And when I look at it, and I heard mentioned the vote that occurred last fall, and I, I think of that as a template, is how I'd like to move forward. It was fairly clear from the community that they didn't want football. Unfortunately, the process became tainted, and that is, at the deliberative session, the motion was changed and as a result, it muddied the waters and it caused a lack of clarity. So as I look at this going forward, I, I see there's going to have to be another warrant article. I hate to say it, but it's true. But in order for you to fairly have an opportunity to put a warrant article out there, you have to have all the information and facts. And I can say that as someone who's negotiated the Barrington Tuition Agreement and every single one of the, of the agreements with all of our collective bargaining units, you have to have that information. Because the most important thing when you put a, a warrant article out, but, you know, the wording, of course, is great, but you have to be able to effectively defend and talk about your warrant. And so that information that, that's been asked, or that Dan's put in, is essential to that. It really comes down to then, and, and I can't legislate parenting, and I can't legislate fairness, and I really wish I could legislate fairness, I honestly do. But it does come down, as this comes to the deliberative session, that this, uh, this article is allowed to stand fairly, that it's not, um, sabotaged, that the true intent of it is allowed to stand. If you don't like football, come out and vote against football. If you want football, vote for football. But we as a board need clarity. It's like, I am responsible to the community when 1,400 people say they don't want football, I have to listen to that. But this is your opportunity, the, the thing that you've come forward and said is we have, or we think we have, a better way that allows us to come to a compromise, for the community to come forward. And I think we have to have a process that allows that to move forward, that the community itself is fully informed and that we can come to a concrete consensus at the end that we can live with. So I support Dan's motion, and furthermore, again, because that is kind of what we always are talking about, a process, that we set in place a process that allows the community to come to a decisive decision.
Right.
Um, along the lines of what Al said, it's, to me, it's an opportunity. And, you know, the meat and potatoes of this opportunity really isn't going to come forth until we actually see a cooperative agreement. So we don't even know, it's all pie in the sky right now. So we really don't know what we're going to be looking at until that agreement comes before us. So really, the argument isn't today, the argument is when that agreement comes back, or agreements come back, um, to see what we're doing. I mean, I look at it as an opportunity, and if, one thing we do, you know, although I'm the newest to the board, one thing I've seen the board do is we look at every opportunity for our students at whatever they do. And, you know, whether that opportunity is in math, or if it's in science, or it's, or what have you, or athletics, we do it. The same thing we do with the athletic fields. You know, I remember having an opportunity and it was, I was told in high school that being on the math team was going to help me get into a good college. Well, I joined the math team, and it was worse than football because of the psychological aspects that went along with it. The studying I had to do and the, the theorems I had to know, it was more stressful than playing football. And it was bad enough that I actually did not take AP Calculus my senior year, which I still regret to this day, because it soured me so much. I didn't take it, I did it my junior year, didn't take it my senior year. All my math friends were doing it, math was my, my thing, and it just killed me. But, um, when people say, well, math and football, they don't, do not congruent with each other. Well, no, well, yes, they are, because it's like, there's still a lot of psychological health that goes along with it. So, um, I'd like to see what this agreement comes back at. I think it was, it was a great, um, proposal you have there, Dan. Um, and I don't think that, um, we can really have a meaningful discussion until we actually see the facts. And the facts are going to be in that, in that discussion. That's really be when the, when we can dig deep and, and have a more in-depth discussion. But I think, um, getting to that point, um, will at least allow us to move forward till we're all educated and we all know all the facts before we start guessing what's going to be out there. I don't know what's out there. Does anybody, I mean, nobody here knows what's out there because it hasn't been presented to us. So I'd like to see what an agreement looks like, um, and I think the parents would like to see what an agreement looks like, um, and we're more than welcome to have everybody back and, and discuss it again, so.
So I'm wondering whether there's a friendly amendment. We might have a due date for the report, rather than just, if there's a time. Uh, Dr. Morse is suggesting the second meeting in January. I think the first meeting in January would be better.
Right, right, because don't we, what's the deadline? If, if in fact, as Al is suggesting, he wants to see a warrant.
Andrew, um, I don't know that, but we might want to get Andrew up to talk about the feasibility of getting Portsmouth and Dover to the table. Can you come up to the podium, Andrew?
I haven't even met him.
So welcome. I don't think we've, yeah, we've been formally introduced.
Everyone, this is Andrew Lethrow. Uh, he is our athletic director at the high school. He's been doing a great job this fall, and so now he's landed right in it.
Right in it, yeah. So what was, what was the question?
Well, we're trying to figure out the feasibility of getting, I think you heard the information we're trying to get. What, what would be feasible timeframe for getting it?
Um, you know, I think by Jan, in January, that's feasible.
Can you, can you get it in the, by the first meeting of January, Andrew? That's the issue, because I'm concerned about bouncing against Thanksgiving and Christmas.
The more time, the better, obviously, but, um, you know, if it needs to be done by then, I certainly.
What if we, try for that, I mean, if we try for that, you know, if it works out, we can't do it, then, you know, I think, I think.
And I think both, um, schools are ready to, to talk, so I, I'm certain, certainly can get, I think, you know, the second week, it would be better, but the first week, I'll try for it.
Okay. Is that, would you accept that as a friendly amendment then, Dan?
Absolutely.
Okay, we all, we all.
Yeah, I do, again, I've still, my concern is, again, I've laid out a process that I thought is a fair process, and I, I want to give the community the opportunity, and I know you're groaning, I know it's painful, but I want to give the community of, or at least the football people, a fair opportunity to have the facts of the cooperative agreement, so.
So I think that's probably the earliest.
Shoot for the first meeting. Yeah, shoot.
Okay. So that's, so, so that's added to your amendment.
I'm fine with that, yeah.
Okay? So are we?
Any other questions for me, or?
I'm sorry, what?
Any more, any more for me, or?
And I think, I think you're done for now.
Okay, great.
One quick question. Dan, did that, that wasn't limited to just two schools, it was whoever will speak to us?
So the last question was, um, besides Portsmouth and Dover, are other districts interested in a cooperative?
Yeah, assuming that Portsmouth and Dover are, yeah, yeah. Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the student rep in favor. That motion is approved.
So does that mean, um, for the record, that Kenny abstains?
He's recusing.
Then Kenny's not.
He's recusing himself.
Kenny's not present, so he, you know, okay. Um, so moving forward to the Siemens lease, I don't know who wants to be presenting on this. Mr. Rizicky.
Good evening, board. Thank you. I hope that you guys have received Wendy's updated email with the, excuse me. I had some updates made to two documents that I believe Wendy has emailed you guys yesterday.
It's in their packet.
It's in your packet. Um, so from the last meeting and the budget meeting, uh, we were asked to present more options, and that's what we're looking to accomplish tonight.
She's got one.
Uh, mostly in regards to financing of three different options. Options one, 1A, 1B, and actually, there's four, is do nothing. Now, the way I broke it out, um, is 10, 15, and 20-year options on each, financing options on each option.
So.
Yes.
I just have a question. So, um, if the 10, like when you, like, for example, option one, 10-year, 905, so what are those, I'm sorry, but what does that number represent exactly?
That is all these projects, whatever is in the options, that's 7.2, um, that is our payment per year.
Oh, per year, okay, got it.
Correct.
So, okay, that payment per year, got it. Okay.
I wonder if I could ask just a basic question, you know? This may be going back to things that you probably explained to me before, explained this before, but it seemed to me we were on track, you know, there's the Davis-Gudrow study, which identified about $5 million in capital needs, and then we set up a fairly disciplined step increase to, to deal with those. And, and it seems to me now, we're, for whatever reason, and I don't quite get the reason, we're saying, we can't do that kind of thing anymore. We can't, you know, gradually increase our budget to accommodate capital needs. We have to go the lease route because something, something's changed. We can't do the old-fashioned pay-as-you-go way. Uh, and we have to take these leases, which put obligations to future boards, which, you know, is, is a concern I have.
Right.
And Dean, I think, mentioned that, you know, it's essentially like a bond, and we, we're paying for things now, but future boards are going to have to come up with the money. So what is it that compels us to change our strategy?
Um, well, as it stands right now with the Davis-Gudrow report, um, we're about $2 million out of that five. Um, $1 million total in the middle school alone. So that middle school is a, is a different topic.
Okay.
We are still on track to, we are still on track right now within our current capital plan to address and finish up all of the Davis-Gudrow items.
Okay.
The big change this time is we asked Siemens to do a complete facility analysis. Um, the Davis-Gudrow report was done about six years ago, um, by a different team, and this is what we charged Siemens to do, is expose everything. What made, um, the Davis-Gudrow report really effective last time is because there was a lot of low-hanging fruit, obvious things, and gave us a book this thick to go off, which we have been. But we asked Siemens, now that a lot of that bigger stuff is done, to really get into the nitty-gritty, and that's what they did. Um, so the, as far as the big-ticket items on here, again, somebody, either this board or the next, is going to have to plan for windows at a, at a different point. Um, the reason why we're discussing it now is not only, one, a lot of the stuff that is at end of life, that we just didn't make a part of our regular capital plan before because we're just too laser-focused on the Gudrow report. Again, it's still up to you whether, um, you feel, we feel, that, um, the windows are, are a big deal, but in reality, um, as well, you know, that's just another thing that may be deferred 10 years down the road because this is such a big expense. Does that make sense?
So which, okay, so windows are such a big expense that you couldn't stage them in?
Um, certainly, we could stage them in, um, but we begin the conversation again about phasing things. So if we were to phase a window project over, let's say, three years, there are risks, risks involved. One is not getting the financing for the next phase because of another district issue. And second of all, we deal with, uh, price increases per year. And third of all, possibly changes in manufacturers and what that particular item may go out of production, um, cost of steel may go up, um, cost of glass. Um, so there's just other unforeseen risks as we look, as we would look to phase things out. It could be done.
Denise?
So one of the things that occurred to me, I, when I was actually reading our minutes[1799.35] from the, from our last meeting is that Sue had recommended that we have a public hearing before we vote. So I certainly think we need to discuss, but I I think, you know, that's a recommendation that we should certainly go with that, which would mean that perhaps we should plan on having the public hearing at the beginning of the next board meeting and then, you know, having the vote at the next meeting if we're ready to have the vote at that meeting. It's just kind of a suggestion. And then my, my other point is just, I've been thinking a lot about this, and I know for myself, I'm really uncomfortable with option one because of the, just, it's a lot of money to kind of tie up over the course of a lot of years. I'm definitely more comfortable with option 1A. And now, I don't know, I hadn't really thought, seen this option 1B till tonight. But I think for myself, I just feel really uncomfortable with option one just because of the size.
Al?
All right. So I'm going to step back because what we're really doing is we've jumped ahead of the strategic plan and we're in it right now for operations. We're essentially doing a block of five to 10 years of the facility side of the operational part of the strategic plan right now. That's what we're doing. And when I look at that, and then maybe I have the benefit or the pain of, because I work on both this budget and the town budget, I think I've learned something from there. In our budgets, we've really benefited from the Barrington tuition agreement, not just by the number of students that we've had. It's that each year, we've had an increase of 10 to 20 students or whatever. And so that provides us with the rarest of rare in the school-side budget, which is revenue. And so when you look at our budget, we've been able to use the revenue of the increasing number of Barrington tuition students to offset our expenses. And so unfortunately, we're coming to the end of that. Not that we won't have 160 students from Barrington anymore, but that the 160 students will be static. And so we're losing, I mean, Sue correctly pointed out that we do reevaluate the cost of the tuitioning students, and we gain a bump from that. And who knows, you know, there may be some benefit from the state, but I wouldn't hold my breath. So we're beginning to lose our ability, or very quickly are going to lose our ability to mitigate our expenses. And so as we throw out, for example, this year, it's 3.58, is that correct, somewhere around there? That's our expenses. If we don't have anything to offset that, we can't meet our goal. And I would assume, I would hope in the future, I'm trying to hold to 3.25%. And so in our packet was the facilities' five-year plan. And part of that plan actually is also then to try to mitigate the elephant in the room, which is the middle school. And so actually, what I'm looking for is, we do it on the town side, we throw expenses out 10 years, we throw revenue out 10 years. I know it's impossible almost to do the revenue 10 years out on the school side. But what I would like to see before our public hearing meeting is let us suppose, when we came into this budget cycle, what Sue did was she took our existing obligations in terms of our contracts to our collective bargaining units and threw in 10%. And then that gave us, 2.79% was our starting point. So I think looking, overlapping this CIP of five years out, let's do this. Let's take all of our collective bargaining units and go with the assumption that they grow at 3% a year. All right? You do the 10% health insurance, and then you tack on the increase that we're trying to do to get up to 2.25 million. Give us what that expense looks like. All right? That's what I want to see. And we do that on the town side. And I can tell you right now, on the town side, we're staring at an expense increase of 7.99% this year. But we're blessed with the fact that we have, we control our ability to gain revenue to mitigate that. So I think a starting point in this conversation, let's do that. Because then, when we look at these options, whether it's option A, option 1A, whatever the third option we're calling, which one of those best fits into the situation that we're in? Because I think we're going to be cramped. And I know we've gotten to 1.3 million in terms of your budget, but if if our expenses are going to rise to 3.25% and we have no ability to mitigate it, it's going to be tough. And so the core of, of, I don't want to have our CIP fall back behind because it's, I mean, again, unless we discover gold or something, we're digging on some field, it's going to be really difficult on the revenue side. And so which one of these agreements best allows us in an environment where we have a limited ability to mitigate our expenses to meet that goal? And so I think that's what I'm kind of looking at because it allows us to make a better choice rather than, wow, 7 million is really daunting, 4 million seems less daunting, and 3 million maybe a little less daunting. I don't think that's a good criteria to pick which one of those best fits our financial situation. So I think if we do this, I mean, we're really trying to come up with how we're going to deal with this. And I think that's the larger conversation.
I've had some somewhat similar concerns that once we, like, I really had one of those middle-of-the-night experiences when, you know, you wake up and think, oh, gee, you know, it's like, it's when I realized that if you tickle, if you, if we budget the way we've been budgeting, you know, 3% increase, you know, and lose the Barrington offset, the increased Barrington offset, we're at about 4.7%, you know? And we won't, we won't have anything to mitigate that. 4.7% budget increase would translate into some towns into a 5% tax increase, you know? Because you're having, you're having to get that just for the property tax. So, you know, it's almost like there's this iceberg ahead of us, I think, in the budget, unless I'm missing something. Because once you lose that offset and if you continue doing what you're doing, you're going to, you're going to have the 4.7. You know, the budget last year would have been 4.7 if it hadn't been for the offset, right, Sue? Yeah. So, and then if you're going to have these increases in, in, that's in the, in the five-year plan and these, you know, the, the facilities budget, where are you going to get that from? Are, you know, what kind of teacher contract are you going to be able to negotiate to get that increase? You know, I think, I think there's a squeeze coming, unless, unless I'm missing something. And we have to kind of figure out how we're going to deal with that and how this plays, I think what you're saying, how all this plays into that.
How does this fit? Again, I'm trying to think, in a squeezed scenario, I mean, the leasing does give us the ability somewhat to spread the cost and mitigate the pressure on your budget. Because there's going to be, I mean, just think of that. We come, throw out a case scenario, we come in at 3.6%. It's like, all right, what are we, where are we cutting? You know, I mean, what do we, what do we remove, do we remove it from, you know, support staff? I mean, most of our budget is staff. Are we cutting staff? Or, I mean, so I think there's going to be an extraordinary pressure on your budget going forward when it's like, do we have a kindergarten teacher? Or, so which of these contracts allows us best to mitigate that risk?
Are you asking me that question?
I'm not putting us further over. But that's, that's the question I'm asking.
No pressure.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, Jim?
Top side.
So I think that gives us work to do.
Yeah.
And then we can bring that back to the next meeting and we can do those projections. As long as, and I think you did it very well, Al, but I just want to reemphasize that any projections we make are really what I call back-to-the-napkin projections because we'll have no idea what's going to happen at the state. And I think using 3% is reasonable. I think using 10% is reasonable. That's what Sue and I use. So we can, we can give you a sense of that. As long as everybody knows, all it is is a sense. It's not, not even close to what you can do on the town side.
I know.
Because you guys control your revenue board, you know.
Yep, I got it.
We'll do that work.
So again, getting back to this, the public hearing thing, because would we, I guess I'm just worried about, does that mean we push the public hearing off for the meeting after that? And then we're getting well into December, you know, or do we go ahead and do a public hearing anyway? Doesn't mean we have to decide that night.
You can do the public hearing then. I mean, first, what you could do is present the information that we're doing and then open the public hearing.
Okay.
You know what I mean? During, that's what we do on the town side.
Okay. Because I just don't want to push it off so far that, you know, we're running into a real crunch time as far as, you know, with the budget, so.
So you'd present all three options?
Yeah. Again, you can give us the projections and everything like that, and then we can have an informed discussion about that. And then you can open the public hearing and talk, I mean, you can talk about.
I think we have to have four, we have to have a page you go. We have to have what happens. I know that probably nobody, you know, what happens if we, we pay as we go?
Just maintain the current practice.
Maintain the current practice and maybe increase, I mean, you have increases built into the the five-year plan anyways. What happens if you took, you, and this may be a horrible scenario, but what happens if you didn't lease, but you used all those increases to start knocking off those options? You know, is that, is that a possibility? I don't know. And I'd just like to see, you know, because it seems to me that, like, whenever you do a diagnosis, one of the things you have to ask is what happens if you don't do these things? You know, how, and what, and what, because then, then you're not, because the advantage of that, which may not be, you know, is you're not obligating future boards to, to pay for something you're doing now. Because I could imagine, you know, 10 years down the road, another Siemens comes in and they find a whole bunch of new stuff, you know? And you're obligated because you're still paying off this half million from the last, you know? Because, I mean, you might think that you're going to knock off everything that's going to be in that 15-year span, but you're probably not, right?
That's correct. And the payback on some of this stuff is not ever going to be realized. If this was a strict energy plan, we would be able to project. And you talked about, you know, healthcare insurance and other things going up. Energy, I think we're kind of at that bubble where things are going to just spike. So whatever we do to mitigate now can help control that cost as well.
Are there certain things you could do, like, you have this, this, this possible, almost 90,000 in energy savings. Which of these things help you get that? Or is it just a combination of all those? Or some of them bigger players than others?
The energy savings, the hugest driver is the lighting. Going to LED lighting is the, is the biggest rebate and the biggest savings of energy.
That's almost $1 million. I mean, that's, that's the reality of, you know, of it is, in terms of trying to talk about doing it in any, say, given year, it's just too much, you know? I don't see how, how you would be able to do a project that big without either, either doing a, either doing the lease or, I mean, you could do it as part of, you could do a bond, you know, or something, or, or, I don't know, a warrant, a separate warrant or something like that. But it's just too big to, to just do it in a regular budget.
Well, I don't want to misrepresent that choice either, Denise, because, you know, when you're doing the, the lighting, if we use that, it's three different buildings. So the way you'd stage it is you'd take one building at a time over three years or, same with the windows. You know, you could do the front side of Massway as an example, because that's where the priority is. And then the following year, you're doing the side of Massway. If that particular window line isn't continued, it's not a contiguous view of the building.
Right.
So, I mean, that's what Jim is saying, you know, what happens with certain hardware is, you know, it's like everything else, they create deliberative obsolescence so that you have to go to the next new, new thing. But, you know, the bottom, the bottom option that Jim's articulated, really for, for him is these are the have-to things. And then can they be staged? Of course they can, and we can put that option out there and you can see how he would stage it and how much time it would take to get it done and so forth. And I think what Tom is saying is I need to weigh that option against doing it at once. And I, we can do that. I mean, that's, that's not rocket science.
Okay.
I was surprised to hear you say that the bigger, biggest energy saving is the lighting. So what is the, I was thinking it would be windows. So the driver behind the windows, is that because they're broken and don't work?
If you took a good look at the Mohermit windows, not only one, first, they're residential-type windows. And second of all, all the gases have been released behind them, which not only creates an energy concern, an energy loss, but just a.
And by definition, can windows don't have a high R-factor? And so they're never considered a, an energy savings unless you've got gaping holes with wind, wind coming through them. It's just, it's a matter of the age and they need to be replaced. So lighting comes under, you know, efficiency, windows comes under, it's time to replace them because they have to be replaced.
Do we really need windows?
But what's, I mean, another way to look at that is what's the consequence of not doing the windows, right?
Well, I don't think that's an option. I think the option of, we have to do the windows, it's a matter of how we go about doing the windows. I mean, the consequence of not doing windows is it's just going to continue to deteriorate.
But what does that mean for the building, the educational environment for?
Are you asking rhetorically or you want the answer?
No, no, I, I.
Okay, I just want to make sure, I don't want to go down a rabbit hole.
So that's the biggest item on the.
Absolutely.
So even if Kenny hadn't raised that question about windows, I was going to go there.
Sure.
As well.
So eventually, your seals break down, you get moisture coming into the building, you end up with, instead of them blocking wind, they become a vehicle for wind to come through the building. You're not going to regulate your HVAC because the windows are in such poor shape. Then you experience rot in the sills. And so eventually, if you don't do the work when it's time to do it, you end up doing a much bigger amount of work because then you have to do structural stuff to hold the windows. So it just goes, I mean, we've all done windows at our houses and why we do them, sometimes we do them for looks, other times we're saying, geez, these need to have to go, these just have to go. And if you go into the Massway School, the Mohermit School, it's not hard, you don't need to be the maintenance supervisor, any of us can see that the windows, it's time for them to be replaced. And, you know, drop dead date for them to replace would be no more than three years, which is why they continue, and all three options to be, the lighting and the windows continue to be the number one and two issues on the list because it's time.
Now, we have the C, the five-year CIP plan and the, and the Siemens plan, are they, I'm looking at them and they don't really kind of, are they completely different? Or are they intertwined? Or are they?
They're definitely intertwined. So, you know, the way that the CIP plan was presented, Brian, is with the assumption that we would be able to take these big issues off the table in the first place. So if, you know, going back to Tom's idea, if you continue to pay as you go, then the CIP plan that you're referring to would have to be adjusted with these priorities built in and something else pushed out into time. So again, it's always, you know, what's the number one priority, what's the number two priority and so forth.
Well, yeah, the priority ones are the most expensive ones. I mean, adding classrooms to the Massway, we're at that point.
Yep.
That's not really much of an option right now. I can see the value in windows, but there are other things that we can kind of pick and choose, I think, off of that list. But like I said, I would hate to push things off to the point where they get too expensive down the road. And, and I, I see the value of the infrastructure, but I think we have to kind of really, kind dig deep into this, dig deep and kind of see where the balance is. So.
Sure.
Yeah.
So I think we have pretty good direction from the board. I mean, you want to see some sort of expense report that we're going to put together against this issue, and then you want to see us put together a pay-as-you-go option and what that would look like, and that would adjust the CIP at the same time. So I think we have pretty clear guidance. I mean, is it more that you want us to do between now and the next time?
So I guess I would be interested in seeing the, the energy savings and the rebate per line item in the different options.
Yeah, sure.
I'm, given the energy consumption and the all-electric heat at the SAU, I was a little surprised that there wasn't some other remediation there. I didn't see anything specific to.
As far as gas is concerned, or some other utility.
Yeah.
We did explore that option in the past. And even though we do have gas right across the street, the trenching that we'd be on the hook for seemed to outweigh, I shouldn't say the cost of the building, but a project of this nature.
Okay.
Yeah, the value added to the building versus trenching.
I do have all that information as far as what every individual project represents on a rebate and energy savings.
Anything else you guys want for your consideration? Are we going to try the budget projections? Is that part of what we're asking for as well?
Yep.
Because I think that will be an eye-opener.
Sure, I agree. And I think, you know, I think Al hit the big, big pieces. Sure, I agree, and I think, you know, I think Al hit the big, big pieces, and that's really where.
Well, I think it'll allow us to come, I mean, because again, I think we're going to try to pick which of these plans best fits our financial, how do we best mitigate that? So, I don't have an answer yet.
And we got, and we got teacher contracts too, which, and you're going to have competing things going after some of this money, so.
I have another question about the performance contracting aspect of it. So, I said, if most of the energy savings is coming from the lighting, I'm assuming that lighting is a relatively small portion of our overall energy consumption. So, how do they assess effectiveness of that?
Actually, because of the cost that we pay for gas, lighting is actually the more significant.
Oh, that's excited, it's the most.
Yeah, we have an amazing arrangement in terms of what we're paying for heating these buildings. But the lighting, we don't have an amazing arrangement on, so actually, lighting is our, is our biggie.
So, the performance contracting is based purely on metered logical use of the building? Or is there a way to break it down below that?
Absolutely. I mean, over the past seven years, we've uploaded all our bills, all of our trends to Portfolio Manager, so they're able to pick out all that.
But they're not, they're not sub-metering or doing something else within the building that's just based on?
No, well, right now, they're doing occupancy sensors and metering of specific devices right now, just so we can get that trend, and we already knew that was going to happen throughout the year.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. I didn't mean to sit down on any of you guys.
Sit.
I think we're set.
Okay, we all set? So, that'll be on the agenda for the next meeting for sure, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, we have, need a motion to, excuse me, motion to approve the Oyster River High School and Middle School winter coaches and volunteers. Could I have that motion?
So moved.
Yeah? Okay, moved by Al, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Denise? Any questions about those? Hearing that, all in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. We have policies, I don't know if people want to separate these out, want to vote them as a block.
I'll move the policies as a block.
Okay.
For first read, the nondiscrimination, equal opportunity policy, AC, bullying and cyberbullying, JICK, emergency care and first aid, JLCE, and background investigation and criminal background, criminal records check, GBCD, for first read.
Moved, moved as a block by Michael, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Denise. Questions about these, concerns?
Just wondered if the, I, maybe this was discussed last time when I wasn't here, but if there was some insight on the additional changes in the nondiscrimination policy in the Policy Committee?
Yes, thanks, Michael. The Policy Committee asked or authorized me to work with interested parties and create a addendum to the discrimination policy, much like we have on transgender, related to race. And so, that work will be ongoing, and we'll come back with an addendum to the discrimination policy.
Thank you.
Okay, are there questions? So, we're to vote. All those in favor, approving these as first read, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those are approved. I think that's all the motions, right? So, we have school committee updates, board committee, negotiations. We still have not concluded the either contract, but I think we're probably, Dr. Marsh, you can, probably within about a meeting of getting both of those contracts.
Yeah, I think the process with both unions has been great in terms of pleasantness at the table, directness of conversation. We're using interest-based bargaining with one group and traditional bargaining with the other, but the attitude of, of staff at the table has been engaging and problem-solving on both sides, so I anticipate that we'll have something to share with the board, probably later than the second meeting in December, it might be.
Almost have to, right?
Yeah, well, we may even have one in the first meeting, so I think we're in a good place.
Okay.
Did you want to talk about the, are we at the place where the school board is talking?
We have like a grid, this, kind of it.
Yeah, I mean, this is what happens when you have an engineer on the committee. Very good, Michael. So, they did a, we had two subcommittees of the group. Jay led the one around the building, and Todd led one around the land. And just as a refresher, you know, the people who are working on this committee are new to the process, but very engaged and very thoughtful. Besides, Michael is an engineer, we actually have an architect, we have a land developer, we just have some really incredible people working. And we came up with 13 different ideas, and then we talked about a process of, how we would go through a process of coming down to a recommendation to the board in May. And so, the 13 options are across the top of this spreadsheet, and the criteria are down the side, and then, obviously, not all, all ideas have equal weight, and so, they actually developed a weighing system. And so, what we're doing right now is finalizing these spreadsheets, and the land piece will be included on the backside of this. And the committee is just taking the very first option independently of each other and ranking, and when we get together at the next meeting, we're going to share our ranks and have a conversation, because, you know, Michael might give something a 10, and I might give something a 6. And we're trying to figure out inter-rate of reliability, if you will, to get a better understanding. You know, as an example, the state recommends about 16 acres for a middle school. Our current middle school is on a little over 13 acres, so do you give it a zero, or do you give it someplace between 0 and 10? So, 10 would be 16 acres. And so, you know, somebody might, at their home, give it a zero, because it's not 16 acres, where I would, might give it a 7, because it's close. And so, we'd have that conversation at the next meeting. So, really great group of people, and it's very enjoyable, I'd have to say. Michael, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Tom?
No, it's a lot of numbers, you know, but I think, I think what it'll do, once you do the numbers, some things, a lot of these things will just drop off.
A lot of things will drop off, but, and the reason for that is, the reason there's 13 options is we tried to think of every option that possibly could be added, and I say this in front of Dean, and I know he'll think of the 14th option. So, I regret saying it in front of Dean, but there's, we came up with 13 variations of how we might solve the middle school issue, from, you know, a brand-new middle school to renovation, to adding on to the high school, to adding on to the elementary schools, and so forth and so on. And then, we'll use this weighted system to start eliminating and getting down to the nuts and bolts of the three or four that really deserve a lot of attention. So, don't sit there and think of the 14th one.
Other school committee updates? No? Public comment? No? Crowd has vanished. Okay, we have the two future meetings. I was talking to Sue, and I think she, you know, we have like, before the deliberative session, we have a manifest meeting scheduled, and I think that's often difficult, so then, you know, I don't, we'll still be on the committee, whoever's, but whoever's on the manifest committee, we're probably going to reschedule that, so that'll be a change down the road, because it's a little bit, too, you're pretty preoccupied before, so. But, so that, so these are all set. So, we need a non-publics.
Oh, I have one other thing. Well, just a comment about that second meeting in December, and the possibility, we had talked in agenda, we were talking about the possibility of the second meeting in December, if the budget is pretty well set, is to spend most of the time in a workshop, I believe is how we said it, on, around the whole homework issue. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, I think, I think we might want to wait to see how.
Right.
What, where we are with the budget, because we have this Siemens issue, I mean, there's a lot of moving parts, I think, that we have to deal with, and so, and we'll have contracts to approve, presumably at least one of those meetings, so.
But more just to mention that it hasn't been forgotten, because I know that, you know, it's been brought up, that we should be focusing on the homework and stuff, and we kind of thought that it might be better if we could sort of set aside, you know, a meeting essentially, to really talk about it, instead of trying to incorporate it within a regular meeting.
So, so, we'll have to figure out when that, whether we can use a regular meeting time, or whether we have to set up another one. But I think, I think we, you know, when you have like a full agenda, kind of like we have now, if you slot it in homework, you know, homework, it's just, you don't have enough time to get at it, so. Dan, you guys say something?
Speaking of homework, we had talked about having a report out, I think, at the last meeting on Blizzard bags, and so, I don't want to lose track of that. That's something that's garnered interest from the community, and the next time we have a.
So, I just, I just, I mean, we do need to talk about that, but I really think we need to talk about calendar before we talk about Blizzard bags, because I think there's a giant misunderstanding in the community about how we do our calendar.
Yeah.
Blizzard bags are tied to counting days, not counting hours, so when we, when we talk about the calendar, I think that gives us the foundation to talk about whether Blizzard bags even makes sense.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Other? So, we ready to move to the non-public session? Could I have a motion to go into non-public session?
So moved.
I think you need to say.
We need to read it.
All the whole spiel. All right, I guess I can.
Okay, Denise, Denise.
I think it's listed here, so I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A colon 32A.
Okay, moved by Denise.
Which is superintendent evaluation.
Is there a second?
I'll second back.
Okay, we need a roll call vote to go.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny wrote, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Tisner, yes.
Okay, we're going into non-public.